Good evening, everyone. Welcome and thank you for all who came to the pre-reception prior prior to our meeting to welcome our two new counselors, as well as our city administrator, to our meeting to welcome our two new counselors as well as our city administrator, Ryan Pelletier, Ryan Pelletier, who will be joining us in January. So I would like to call the meeting who will be joining us in January. So I would like to call the meeting to order for December to order for December 1st, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Would like to make note of all members present 1st, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Would like to make note of all members present this evening, this evening, including City Administrator Cole Prescott. And would you please join including City Administrator Cole Prescott. And would you please join me for the Pledge me for the Pledge of Allegiance? of Allegiance? Thank you very much. All right, next item, item four this evening. We do have committee
Thank you very much. All right, next item, item four this evening. We do have committee correspondence to council. Are there any committee members wishing to speak?
correspondence to council. Are there any committee members wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item number five, we do not have Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item number five, we do not have any general this evening. Item six is public comment. If there is anyone wishing to speak, any general this evening. Item six is public comment. If there is anyone wishing to speak, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will you will have three minutes to address the council. have three minutes to address the council. Not seeing anyone seeking recognition. All right, moving on to item seven, that is action Not seeing anyone seeking recognition. All right, moving on to item seven, that is action items. Item A this evening is the remarks by myself, Mayor McPhail. And first off, items. Item A this evening is the remarks by myself, Mayor McPhail. And first off, I would like to wish a good evening and thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We are I would like to wish a good evening and thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We are here here for two reasons. First, we are here to welcome and confirm the oath of office of for two reasons. First, we are here to welcome and confirm the oath of office of our two newest our two newest members of the Saco City Council, Jeff Onan and William Gale. I have had the members of the Saco City Council, Jeff Onan and William Gale. I have had the pleasure of pleasure of working with both of these gentlemen over the past few years and have seen firsthand working with both of these gentlemen over the past few years and have seen firsthand their dedication and willingness to serve the residents of Saco. Jeff has been a respected their dedication and willingness to serve the residents of Saco. Jeff has been a respected and vital volunteer, serving on the Shoreline Commission, and Will has brought his knowledge and vital volunteer, serving on the Shoreline Commission, and Will has brought his knowledge of all things DOT to the Traffic Safety Committee, as well as serving on the school board. I of all things DOT to the Traffic Safety Committee, as well as serving on the school board. I am looking forward to working with both of them and to continue moving the council forward am looking forward to working with both of them and to continue moving the council forward as we work together to keep Saco on the forward path that promotes and encourage resident as we work together to keep Saco on the forward path that promotes and encourage resident input, transparency, and improved policy and processes across all departments. Congratulations input, transparency, and improved policy and processes across all departments. Congratulations to both of you. to both of you. Second, as we welcome two, we must acknowledge the loss of two, counselors Mike Berman and Second, as we welcome two, we must acknowledge the loss of two, counselors Mike Berman and Phil Hatch. I promised them last week that I would share my thoughts with them this week, Phil Hatch. I promised them last week that I would share my thoughts with them this week, so here I go, and I promise to be short. Mike, you have been a strong and steadfast so here I go, and I promise to be short. Mike, you have been a strong and steadfast advocate advocate for the residents of Ward Four. We would not be where we are today without for the residents of Ward Four. We would not be where we are today without your never-ending your never-ending fight for Camp Ellis and the shoreline and keeping all of us on point fight for Camp Ellis and the shoreline and keeping all of us on point and on track. You and on track. You have brought thoughtful and engaged conversations to the dais and have brought thoughtful and engaged conversations to the dais and have earned the respect of have earned the respect of all sitting up here, including myself. I will miss your sense all sitting up here, including myself. I will miss your sense of humor during our long of humor during our long meetings and your ability to see and respect both sides of meetings and your ability to see and respect both sides of an issue or concern and not an issue or concern and not be afraid of asking the questions that are needed. be afraid of asking the questions that are needed. And Phil, four and a half years ago, I went against the opposition and voted on your appointment And Phil, four and a half years ago, I went against the opposition and voted on your appointment to the city council. There has not been a day that has gone by that I have to the city council. There has not been a day that has gone by that I have regretted regretted that decision. Your dedication and most of all, respect for the city and that decision. Your dedication and most of all, respect for the city and your constituents your constituents has been the push we needed to ask the tough questions and sometimes has been the push we needed to ask the tough questions and sometimes give the tough answers. give the tough answers. And also your ability to think outside the box. You have taught me more about zoning And also your ability to think outside the box. You have taught me more about zoning and land use than I've ever thought I needed, or wanted, and you are an example of community and land use than I've ever thought I needed, or wanted, and you are an example of community and forgiving back. You have always been there when I needed in there to listen to, and forgiving back. You have always been there when I needed in there to listen to, or a good debate, or just checking in to make sure I was okay during the busy times. or a good debate, or just checking in to make sure I was okay during the busy times. So to both of you again, I say thank you. Thank you so much for more than what we have So to both of you again, I say thank you. Thank you so much for more than what we have just stated here, and I, as I did, promised to keep it short. So with that, I would now just stated here, and I, as I did, promised to keep it short. So with that, I would now like to present both of you with a gift of gratitude and also ask former counselor Gunn like to present both of you with a gift of gratitude and also ask former counselor Gunn to receive a parting gift as well on his leaving us last month due to some residents' to receive a parting gift as well on his leaving us last month due to some residents' concerns and issues. But Joe, you have done an amazing job as well, and you were a vital concerns and issues. But Joe, you have done an amazing job as well, and you were a vital part of this council, and we wish to recognize you as well. part of this council, and we wish to recognize you as well. prior to our meeting to welcome our two new counselors, as well as our city administrator, Ryan Pelletier, who will be joining us in January. So I would like to call the meeting to order for December 1st, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Would like to make note of all members present this evening, including City Administrator Cole Prescott. And would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you very much. All right, thank you, everyone, for that. And next on the item, we do have the swearing in of our two new elected officials. I would like to ask Will and Jeff to please come up with our city clerk, Michelle Hughes, for the swearing of the oath. Have you both raised your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and the State of Maine, and that you will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the City of Saco, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city counselor for your respective ward? we can set up and have the school board members join us for the next item with them, and that will be some ethics and FOA training that are required annually, as well as the continuation of city business. Thank you. All right, good evening and welcome back, everyone. So next on the item, we do have the Ethics and FOA Training with our city solicitor, Priscine, with us this evening. She will be conducting the training for us, and we do have the members of the school board, as well as our new counsel. Leah, thank you.
Good evening, everybody, council members, new council members, members of the school board. I don't think I've met many of you, and in fact, I don't think there are new school board members, right? Okay, so I would imagine that folks here, many of whom have served for a long time, and there are some new folks. So I'm hoping, you know, some of you could probably teach this course better than I could, but I hope everybody will get some takeaways as we move through. You will see in front of you, I have provided a packet. It's basically the materials that we're going to be discussing, and there are some links to some additional resources that may be helpful. As far as the order of operations and our agenda, what we're going to be doing is hitting three major topics. First, your duties under the Freedom of Access Act, which I'll refer to as FOA. Second are concepts of conflict of interest and bias. And the third is basically the cities and the school boards' respective codes of ethics. And what you'll find with respect to the ethics codes, a lot of it will be what we've already covered through FOA training and conflict of interest. And so, you know, bottom line is, all of the policies that we're talking about are very much related. Either sometimes they reiterate each other, but in any event, they're always kind of complementary. And, you know, if you learn nothing else tonight, or if you hear nothing else tonight, we're talking about two overarching concepts. First is just good governance, right? That what you're doing here is you're engaging in practices that instill confidence in government. And I don't think it will be shocking to hear that, you know, these days, there is less and less of that, right? And so it really seems, when I'm looking at these policies, that that is the goal. And what I have seen personally, and I should say to you, I am fairly new as the city solicitor. It's not even been a year yet. And so what I find is, you know, as you can imagine, I read a lot of policies. I write a lot of policies. But what I have seen in my short time, and I'm just reflecting on some of the comments I heard last time when we were talking about the outgoing counselors, is that what these policies talk about are not just words on paper. I have seen them myself, and it seems that the City of Saco truly embraces these concepts that we're going to talk about, that there's a culture of transparency, of respect, and that's the culture that's being generated here. And I've, you know, witnessed it firsthand, and to see citizens say to counselors, "Look, we often disagree, but I always felt listened to and respected." And that is exactly what we're trying to do here. And so, again, good governance is the first concept. The second is pretty much the golden rule. Everything you learned in kindergarten is pretty much what you need to know. Respect people, treat them with kindness and compassion, and listen. And so those are the big overarching themes. I want to say that these sometimes feel like a finger-wagging exercise, and that is absolutely not what I'm trying to do here. Basically, just talk about what your duties are and possibly what the consequences could be for not meeting those obligations. And so, without further ado, I just want to say that, yes, this is the lawyer talking, but I always find in training sessions, and that is what this is, dialogues are wonderful, questions are great, don't wait till the end. If anything I say raises an issue, by all means, please just jump in and ask the question. Okay? All right. So first topic, Freedom of Access Law, otherwise known as the Right to Know Law, FOA. Basically, obviously, the intention here is to give you an overview of what your duties are. And you'll also find in your packet, there's a very, I don't know, maybe 10, 15-page exposition of everything you ever wanted or didn't want to know about FOA. It's there. There are also some links, helpful links, FAQs. So, you know, if you want to do further study, by all means, you have those materials available. So basically at, you know, at base, what the Freedom of Access Act is about is twofold. You've got public records on one hand and public proceedings on the other. And that's what this law governs, right? And the informing purpose of the regulations with respect to both And the informing, the informing purpose of the regulations with respect to both records and proceedings essentially are the same, is that, you know, the purpose of the Freedom of Access Act is to ensure that government is done in the open, that it is transparent, and that if there are documents that are public, that the public has the right to inspect and to see those documents. What I should say, and it's really important to know, is that the statute itself and the case law interpreting it makes very, very clear that the act, if there's ever a conflict, will be construed liberally, basically to affect the purposes of the law. So, when in doubt, most likely, there will be, say, a record, there's been a denial of a right to inspect a record, it's, you know, like I said, if there's a conflict, likely the court will err on the side of disclosure if it's a tough call. Now, that's not to say that there aren't very properly things that are not public, there are exceptions to public proceedings or public records. And that is, those are documents that both of, you know, the council and the school board are going to be familiar with. Well, first, we have executive sessions, right? That those are topics that the legislature has determined are properly held outside of, of a public proceeding. We have juvenile records, I'm sure school boards know that very well, employee records, and then there's also opportunities to confer with counsel. Now, this is something that I think is really important to know, and many folks don't know this, is that when municipal employees, council members, board members are communicating with counsel, one would think, "Oh, well, I'm talking to the attorney, that's privileged," right? Well, it is not, unless the city is engaged in active litigation, or there is pen, you know, there's, it's contemplated, it's, it's pretty sure that it's going to happen. Otherwise, any communications with counsel are public records. So, I just want to make sure that that is clear, because sometimes folks just don't know that. Because in the public, excuse me, the private sector, of course, any communications with attorneys are privileged, not so in the municipal arena. And I will say that a mindfulness, you know, this, again, FOA, of course, the statute says you have to do training, but I think it's very important to understand, you know, I'm getting a little long in the tooth, I've been practicing municipal law for quite some time, and I will say, over the past couple of decades, the amounts of challenges are very much increasing. You may note that the requests for public records are increasing, and again, we're kind of in this climate where there's some mistrust relating to government and government activities. And so, you know, again, I was talking about how your ethics policy and FOA, they dovetail, right? Transparency. And so, what I will say is, when you are writing an email, before you press send to that email, you always want to think to yourself, "Would I want this to be on the front page of the Portland Press-Harold?" Because it could be, right? And, and that's not to discourage you from writing any emails, just to be mindful and to think about it before you press send, right? Okay. Yes, please?
So, is that, so, any public conversation that a counselor may have, even with constituents, would be under FOA if it's recorded, or like if I'm just having a brief conversation with a citizen?
That is such a great question, because, thank you, I felt you gave me a soft toss on this one. As you know, and as the school board knows, you wear many hats, depending upon what, what situation you're sitting in. You can be, you know, you're often a legislative function, right? You're, you're creating and adopting ordinances. You are in, you know, sometimes a quasi-judicial capacity, and that's very different, and that's unusual. So, if you are entertaining an application, a dangerous building proceeding, where you essentially, or you essentially, if it's an expulsion proceeding, or disciplinary hearing, then you're basically judge and jury. If that is the case, you really, that's, you've probably heard of ex parte communications? That is something that you do not want to do, right? And it's hard, it's awkward sometime, because you have to say, "Hey, you know what? Super interesting, thank you, please come to the public hearing, make your position known, but I can't really speak to you because I'm the decision-maker." Very different when you're acting in your capacity as a representative, right? That's your job, your constituents come to you. That is, but what I will say is, if it is, for example, with respect to a, "I'm a contractor, I hear you have this bid coming up," that is something you want to respectfully say, "You know what? I need you not to discuss that with me, bring it to the public, you know, speak about this meeting in public, and, and we're fine." But when it comes to, you know, say you get an email from a constituent that discloses some pretty personal information, health information, whatever that may be, there are certain exceptions, and of course, under FOA, there are exceptions, and then there are exceptions to the exceptions. So, if there's that gnawing feeling, "Hmm, what should I do here?" Not to have like the self-promotion here, but sometimes that's when it's a good idea to call the attorney to get advice on that. But if it's just regular counselor, constituent communications, unless there's some personal information there, then those are public records. Okay? Answer their question. So, I've sort of put the cart before the horse here. What is a public record, right? There is a definition of what a public record is, and I will tell you, I'm going to read it, I'm going to read you excerpts, just so that you can be aware that it is in fact a very broad definition, okay? So, it basically is any written, printed, or graphic matter that has been received or prepared for use in connection with the transaction of public business, or contains information relating to the transaction of public business. So, that is pretty broad. So, let's get kind of down into real-world questions. Emails and texts, those are very, you know, a lot of the public records that you're dealing with for your council meetings, you have extremely organized, you know, with all of the documents, right? Contracts, memos, policies, ordinance drafts, everyone knows those are public records. And they're often hyperlinked out in your, in your respective board packets and agendas. But emails and texts, those aren't, right? And so, I think it's important that, that we are mindful that those are almost always public records, right? And so, what I will say is that emails are a little bit easier, because this is a city, you have a great tech, you know, tech folks who, if there's a public records request, they can do parameter searches and find those records. But when it comes to texts, guess what? No, at least I don't think that the city has records of people's texts or documentation. And so, again, I may be telling you things you already know, but if it is related to the transaction of public business, then I strongly suggest you do not use texts, you do emails. Because, for a couple of reasons. First, because, again, if there is a public records request, usually, and I'm looking at you, Emily, you can help me here, if that's the case, then usually it is sent to the tech folks, not to every single individual counselor to say, "I want all of your, please send me all of your emails from X date to X date." Tech can handle those requests. But oftentimes, you know, they, they can't do that for texts, right? Also, those are your personal devices, and God forbid, if we get into litigation, somebody could subpoena your personal devices, your, you know, your personal computers. And so, takeaway is, use your city email addresses for communications, don't text. And if you do, make sure you save those records, because there is an obligation, not only to, you know, be mindful of these things, but there are record retention rules for documents for municipalities. So, just be thinking about that. Yes, please.
Does the city retain our emails for a certain amount of time, or should we be keeping them in files?
So, we properly archive email records through our IT department handles all that?
But, that's a great question, because it leads it to a segue. Personal notes that you may take on your, you know, throughout, those are properly public records, right? So, those are, now, if those notes are taken during an executive session, that's a different story. But if anybody is interested and sees you taking notes on your, they could properly request those, so just be mindful of that, too. And please know, I'm not discouraging anyone from doing that, just know that if they're requested, that you should be retaining them, and that they can be requested. Okay? Now, I know this, these seem, these examples seem a little bit silly, but bear with me here. All right, back to the texting, all right? And I say this simply because I've, this has happened, okay? So, you're there, it's a really long meeting, lots of, you know, a lot of stuff going on, and you kind of, people are seeing it in the audience, so, they're texting, they're texting, they're texting a lot. And it could be simply, "Honey, can you pick up some milk on the way home?" Right? But, people don't know that. And if it's happening a lot, and it happens during a particularly strident or important issue, I have seen those requests, and, you know, sometimes it's not, "Honey, can you get some milk?" It's, "Honey, oh my God, I cannot believe what that parent just said." Or, "Wow, my fellow counselor, they are really," you know? So, be careful. I say this simply because it's happened, it's happened more than you think, and just be careful, that's all. And, think about this, when we get to the ethics policy, this is all, when I was saying it's all dovetailing, it's about, you know, instilling confidence and not doing anything that damages the reputation of the city. So, the, all roads lead back to the same kinds of concepts here. So, public records requests, now, the good thing is, that both the city and the school district department, I should say, have FOA officers, right? I believe it's the town clerk, or the city clerk, who, who fields the requests, and I would imagine, and I shouldn't say this, but I would imagine it's the superintendent who does for, for the school department. But, the issue there is, you might think, "Oh, I'm not the Freedom of Access Officer, I don't need to worry about this." But back to what I was saying is, what you do need to worry about is what you are generating as far as records, and retaining them if they are texts or within your personal control. Okay? Yes, please? As the FOA? Okay, excellent, thank you very much for that. So, so, bottom line is, if you get a, because sometimes a constituent will, for your ward, say, or, you know, say, "Hey, I want all of these records," send it off to the FOA, your access officer. Of course, please.
So, am I also correct in my understanding that if any elected official or employee receives a FOA request, they are obligated to forward that to the FOA officer internally?
Absolutely, yes. Thank you for that clarification. So, yes, you get that instantly, you send it off. Yes, counselor?
So, just, so, clarifying that request, is it like a specific request? Like, "I'm making this request under FOA," or is it, "I just want to see the records"?
So, that is also, excellent question. There are no magic words, there are no magic forms. I know the city does have a portal that would like you to use that particular form, certainly encourages it, because it asks for, it makes it easier for everybody. But, there are no magic words, and it does not have to be in writing, if they call the clerks, and, you know, you have to respond. Back to what I was saying, is that construed liberally in the interest of open, openness and transparency. So, yes. And, what I will say is, is that, I mean, I see these a lot, and sometimes it is, "I want all records relating to," fill in the blanks, okay? No clarification, it could, so, getting that means from the dawn of time until the moment, and when really, folks aren't needing that, or wanting that, and, and it is appropriate to ask questions, "Is this what you want?" Can, and not to say, "Can we narrow it by saying we only want to give you such and such?" But, it's in everybody's best interest, because of course, it's not free, right? Copies cost a certain amount, ten cents a page, the city can charge time, an hourly rate for its time after the first two hours, which are free, but then it's $25 an hour. So, it benefits everybody to get real, real clear on what those, the scope is of the ask. Okay? So, we've talked about public, public records, the next topic is public proceedings, right? And that's where we are right now. And that is the, the whole point of open government, is that it should take place in this room, or whatever school you happen to be at for your particular meetings, right? And that, again, is back to that concept of openness, transparency. So, bottom line is, rule of thumb, if any three members of either of your boards are getting together, then after three, that is, and should be, a public proceeding, and it should be properly noticed. What's the notice requirement? A lot of folks think, "Oh, well, it has to be seven days before, or five days before." Well, this is one of those situations when the statute itself doesn't provide much guidance, it says, "Within a period of time reasonably calculated to give notice." Okay, well, that's not all that much help. But, if it's an emergency meeting, and those are allowed too, so long as the media is alerted, and you post it as quickly as you can on your website, or whatever, wherever else you post notices. Okay, so, public participation, incredibly important. Does that mean that anybody at any time, when the spirit moves them, can get up and demand to be heard? I think we know the answer to that is no. They have an opportunity, I notice on both, both council and the school board's agendas, you do have a designated open-to-the-public session, session on all of your agendas, at least I think so. Is that, is that fair to say? And what I will say is, that wasn't always, a lot of towns, a lot of boards do not do that. There's a change in the law this year that requires not all boards, but municipal officers, select boards and councils to do that. And this one is, you're ahead of the game, you're already doing it, so, that's great. One thing I do want to make sure that you understand, and this is a really important kind of trap for the unwary, hot topic in the Right to Know Law, is the intersection of public records and public proceedings. And that is when a post to Facebook, Instagram, or an email becomes an unintentional, unlawful proceeding, right? Because, think about it, if you are three members of a board talking about a matter of public business, whether it be in cyberspace, or at the grocery store, that should have been a public meeting, right? And where I have seen, and what I should also say, is that violations of FOA often abound, and I will tell you that 99.9% of the time, they're always unintentional, right? And it's, and it's in this, but the law doesn't care whether they're intentional or not, and that's why this is important. So, let me be clear, that counselors, school board members, certainly, "Hey, I can't make it on Friday, did you get this agenda?" Things like, that are non-substantive, that's totally fine, but if you are talking about a substantive matter in email, that technically should be a public meeting, and it should happen at a public meeting. So, particularly if you are sitting in a quasi-judicial capacity, because that gets into concepts of, of due process, right? The Constitution, we swore to uphold the Constitution, one of those constitutional principles is due process. And so, if there's conversations going on, and again, not ill-intent, most of this is because the people who serve on these boards are serving their communities, and they really are doing their homework, and they want to understand the issues. But, you want to have an applicant who is before you for a particular matter, hear what everybody's thinking about, and what the basis is ultimately for your decisions. So, if they want to address that, or correct what they believe to be a misperception, they have the opportunity to do that. All right. Let's see. And I will say, in your packets, I'm not going to go into this, but there are lots of, you know, you have your ethics policy, you have Freedom of Access, but you also have these related concepts in both, both council and the school board, I see social media policies, email policies, nepotism policies, you know, all of those kinds of things that are very much related tangentially to what we're talking about. So, there are links to those at the last page of your materials, in case you're interested. I'm going through this, I'm trying to move, okay, executive sessions, that's an important one, right? Because that is an exception to the requirement that proceedings be taken in public. And, again, we emphasize, the purpose of FOA is transparency, and that government takes place in public. But, the law certainly acknowledges that there are certain circumstances where councils, boards should have the opportunity to discuss things away from the public. And, but, but, I should say, is that those topics are very narrowly defined, and if you go into executive session, you must look and check a box, and say, "Yep, this follows, this falls into one of the exceptions." And so, the kinds of exceptions that would be relevant to these boards, suspension and expulsion hearings, those have to be in executive session for obvious reasons, employment actions, disciplinary kind of hearings, acquisition of public property, that, if you're negotiating, and that makes sense, right? You want to, you don't want to disadvantage the city or the school department's position, right? With prematurely disclosing these kinds of things. Consultation with the attorney regarding rights and duties, discussion of documents that are confidential by Discussion of documents that are confidential by nature, for example, student, student records, those kinds of things that, um, you know, if, if a record is confidential by statute, then obviously you should not be discussing those records in public session. Makes sense. Um, and also discussions of, of, like, enforcement actions with the code enforcement officer. So, if they don't fall within those specific enumerated topics, then you can't do it. Okay? Um, have to go in for, by vote of three-fifths of your, of your, of your board. I know you know this, but to reiterate, you cannot, cannot make a decision in executive session. Obviously, the, um, thought process, and the pros and cons, and, and discussing the issue itself, but you cannot decide to sign a contract, adopt a policy, enter a lawsuit, unless and until you make that vote in public session. Okay? Um, something that I think is really important, that I will commend both boards for having these policies, because I don't see it very often, is that the notion, and the emphasis about what happens in executive session stays, it's like Vegas. What happens in executive session needs to stay in executive session. And the reason for that isn't, again, to try to be closed, but because it can really subject the city or the, of the board to serious legal consequences for violating confidentiality, or disadvantaging a position, say, you're a defendant in a lawsuit, right? So, there's really important to understand the sanctity of executive session, and both of your rules of procedure, um, specifically state that, right? So, I just wanted to emphasize that. So, we're in FOA, still have two topics to consider, I promise you I'm going to speed up. But, what's the point of FOA aside from, we talked about the importance of openness and transparency? What happens if there's a violation? Is there, and are there any consequences? And the answer to that is, yes. Twofold. The bottom line is that there are penalties, if there, if it, if there's found to be a violation. The penalties themselves financially aren't huge, it's five hundred or a thousand, depending on how many violations there have been. But the real consequences are reputational, right? But also, attorney's fees, because these cases become very document-intensive, and they're expensive, and they can be avoided. Okay? Um, I think we've covered mostly the FOA stuff, and I know that's something that folks have questions about. Is there any, anybody want to ask anything about Freedom of Access? Yes?
How does all of this apply to the sixty-fourty schools?
Can you, the sixty-fourty schools?
Like Thornton Academy, they don't...
Oh, so, this is something, I, I really, I should know the answer to this question. I don't know if they are considered to be a public entity. Because these apply to governmental, municipal, any, any level of government. Now, what I will say is that there are plenty of quasi-municipal entities, so, I would be more than happy to get an answer, a tangible answer. I don't want to shoot from the hip on that, but I will make a note, and I will get an answer to that question. Thank you for asking that. Okay. Um, okay, so, let's move on to conflict of interest and bias. Basically, they're absolutely related concepts. One is more, uh, so, conflict of interest is more financial, you think about money. Bias is sort of more about relationships. Um, and so, basically, state law, the statute, plus your own ethics policies for both the council and the school board, very much address this. They very much flag this as an issue, and very much encourage you not to engage in decision-making that is influenced by conflict. So, what is a conflict, right? Well, like many laws, it depends on what the source of, and how is it defined? State law defines it very kind of, um, narrowly, in the sense that you have to have a ten percent, what they call pecuniary interest, in the entity involved, right? So, if you're a shareholder of a business, but you have to own a certain percentage. I think the council and the school board is wise to not, um, sort of split hairs in that regard, while I own nine point nine percent of the company. No, okay? So, the council and your, and the school board say, if you have any financial interest in the matter before you, step off. There's no problem with just, the rule of thumb, disclose, recuse, and go sit out with your fellow members of the audience. That is not to say that if you feel a certain way, and you want to express that, by all means, as a member of the public, a citizen of this fair city, you may do so. But you want to make sure, again, what hat you're wearing. And I know sometimes it seems silly, but there is a big difference between sitting where you are, and making comments, and coming up as a member of the public, right? So, that's important. There's a duty there, whether it be because there's a financial interest, or bias is a family relationship, um, you know, tho- those are the things. And, and I will tell you, we all have our gut, our guts tell us things. And when there's this nagging question about, oh, should I, do I? The answer is, yes, you should, right? You should disclose, and it may be something that is minor, and doesn't require con- uh, you to recuse yourself. But it's very much better to say, hey, this is, uh, you know, this was my college roommate twenty-five years ago, haven't seen him in twenty-five years. That you could raise, raise it with your fellow board members, and everyone could say, you know what, I don't think that's a conflict. But better to disclose than, you know, a year later that come up and there's a lawsuit about, you know, an interested transaction. So, recuse, disclose, or, excuse me, disclose, recuse, or just disclose, and your fellow board members can say, you know what, we're fine, I think we're good. Also, if it's at a public meeting, members of the public have an opportunity to hear what you say, back to the ethics, back to transparency, back to perpetuating the, the reputation of the city. It can only be a good thing to disclose these things, the opposite is not true. Okay? Um, incompatibility of offices. This is a related concept, right? That, under state law, there are certain positions that are incompatible. And what that means is, is that you owe a duty of loyalty to both, and you cannot possibly meet that duty if you act in both, both capacities, okay? And I will say that, I know that the school board has, back to that nepotism policy that says, and this is based on statute, actually, that no school board member or spouse can be an employee of the district, okay? So, that's sort of that incompatibility, that, you know, you will, if you're sitting on this board, um, you are making possibly decisions that could impact your family members about salary, or, or conditions of employment. And so, it makes sense that that's something that should not be done. Okay? Um, any questions, so much on, on conflict and bias? Think the rule is, if you have that question inside, you think, ooh, let's raise it, let's talk about it, and move on. Okay? Um, so, that moves us into a third topic, which is the respective codes of ethics of both, both, um, boards. I will say that there's a tremendous amount of crossover, so what I thought I would do is highlight the cities, because it's more comprehensive, and then play cleanup with a few of the concepts that the school board emphasizes that aren't necessarily in the council's policies. Does that make sense? Okay. So, um, what I liked about your ethics policy is not so much what, you know, a lot of these ethics policies are thou shalt not, don't, don't, don't. I really like the city's policy because it's aspirational. It's not just what you shouldn't do, it's what you should do, right? Um, and again, back to what I heard the other day, it is what you're doing, right? But it's always a good reminder to, to just think about these concepts. So, I'm going to go through the, the, the sections pretty quickly, but the first section, of course, is the purpose. It sets the tone and the expectations of the culture, um, basically transparency and openness. We talked about that under the FOA discussion. Trust, um, fairness and equity, back to conflicts and bias, right? So, it's all, all related. Um, and why, under the policy, why do we do this? Because it results in positive reputation for the board, for the board members, and it also protects citizens' and students' interests, right? That's, that's what it's all about. So, the section two, and what I also like about this, is that it doesn't only apply, these policies don't only apply to, um, you know, elected officials or appointed officials, it also applies to employees, even to volunteers. So, that expectation is universal, which I think is excellent. Um, and what that expectation is, is that there's a mindfulness, right? It actually instructs you, before you make any decisions, you want to hearken back to those ethics, and you really want to think about, will this decision, okay, I'm the lawyer, of course I'm going to say that, this, is this decision legal? I'm, I'm going to go out on a limb and think that you're making legal decisions, okay? The next question you're supposed to be asking yourself is, will this decision, or my action, reflect negatively on the city? Not just me, but on the city, right? And, and then, of course, the next question is, will it adversely affect the city? And how could that possibly be? Legally speaking, financially speaking, reputationally? Okay? Counselor Johnson? No, okay. Um, and the bottom line is, again, back to that gut, most of us know when we're skating that line, right? Um, and so, if you have that nagging little voice, listen to that voice. The policy also establishes warnings about not engaging in inappropriate behavior, and the consequences for doing so. Section three is more directed at city officials, again, that, um, that you need to be fair and impartial in your decision-making, that you need to be responsive, right? You need to answer those emails or those phone calls, be out in the community. Listen, and I love this, I've never seen this in a policy. It actually tells you, listen, like, proactively listen and ask questions, right? Engage. And, another really important policy point here is to follow the, the structure, the government structure. What I mean by that is, it's a diplomatic way of saying, stay in your lane, right? That, it's not boards' roles to get involved in staffing issues. That is very much the administrator, city administrator, the superintendent. So, be mindful of those things. Again, so much of these things are, wh- when people step out of line, is out of good intention, right? They're passionate, they want to make things better, but understand your role and stay in your lane. Because you are stewards, and I love this word too, you are considered to be stewards of the cities and the schools' resources and reputations. Again, um, how to conduct meetings, basically, you, I don't need to tell you this, right? You treat people with respect, you don't interrupt. Now, I say this, I'm preaching, I know, I, I, sometimes I can be the worst offender, I'm, I'm passionate about things, I'm really interested, right? So, sometimes I might cut somebody off, and I realize, nope, can't do that. Listen, don't interrupt. Um, fairness and equableness, allocating time, right? And I know, um, I've been here, Madam Mayor, we talk about three minutes, right? It, it, and sometimes people are not here, but I've seen it, like, some people can go on for ten minutes, and some people are cut off after one minute, right? And oftentimes, that is related to the content of what they are speaking about. And obviously, I don't need to tell you this, but I will emphasize that, um, content-based restrictions, we don't want to get into that, that's back to constitutional issues, freedom of expression, right? Now, freedom of expression does not mean that you can get up, one can get up and, and be, um, you know, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? It's, it's, I, I hope that you don't have these situations, but there's certain circumstances where it's not a content-based restriction, it's a behavior-based restriction. If somebody is being aggressive, or menacing, or threatening violence, obviously you can shut that down. But, you know, and I can imagine school boards, right? There's, there's a lot of emotion about issues, there always has been about people's children, right? Um, is there a question?
What do you do, uh, where we've had in the past, where someone has come during public comment and gone on about, um, personnel issues?
That, you can absolutely shut that down, because, and that's an easy one, right? Because, when I was, and, 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 again, I love it, I'm getting all these soft tosses here, I say that you don't want to have content-based restrictions. Of course, there's a but there. The but is, if they are in those areas that are confidential by statute, such as student issues, staff issues, you can simply say, you know, I'm sorry, that is an issue that we cannot discuss, um, it's confidential by statute, speak to the superintendent. Does that make sense?
Yeah, a hundred percent. I just wanted to get...
Hundred, yeah.
Get it from your mouth, because...
Yep, nope, that's, that's the way.
Thank you.
Um, okay, um...
Play it to that point, right?
Yes.
That is one thing that I have discussed with superintendent and Meg about, um, I don't believe you guys have a written policy for that, council does. We have the rules of public comment, stating what can and can't be, and at what point we can step in. So, school board at some point may want to look at putting a policy in place.
And that, this is...
I think by statute though, right, that covers it, because it's considered a confidential in this particular instance.
Exactly. There are easy ones, which are great, we love the easy ones, where you can shut it down. But when it starts getting, you know, look, we've all been at these meetings where it's uncomfortable to hear certain things being discussed. But uncomfortable isn't a statutory reason, or permissible reason to shut it down. Even when people are getting heightened, or excited, or may use a bad word here or there. But that's the beauty of being the mayor, or the chair of the board, you know, there, there's some discretion that you have to exercise in the moment. And it's tough, sometimes it's just a tough call. Speaking of a tough call, one of the things I found interesting about the, uh, city's policy is that there's a requirement, there's a lot of stuff about conflicts of interest, I'm not going to go over those, we've already talked about that concept. But avoiding political activity, and I thought, it doesn't, it doesn't say more, it doesn't say what that is. And I found that to be an interesting comment, right? And how does one, I mean, you're politicians by nature, right? You, you're getting elected, so, what does that actually mean? And I think that, you know, again, there's an easy example, that you don't go out and say, hey, if you want to continue to be the code enforcement officer, or if you want to get this permit, then vote for me, or contribute to such and such campaign. We know that that's an easy example. But what about canvassing for a candidate that's not, you know, city-related? What about participating in your local parties, organizations? That's a tough one. And I think, really, what this means, and has to mean, from a reasonable perspective, is that you cannot use your position to exert influence in, in any kind of way, right? Try to use it for personal gain, or to persuade somebody to do something that they wouldn't otherwise be inclined to do. I think that's a reasonable interpretation. Gifts, you don't want to be accepting gifts, right? Because the perception is not a good one. Now, you know, people come around with pens, or they want to buy you a coffee, is that going to result in a federal case? I do not think so. That said, absolute categorical policy sometimes is just, no, because no is easy. The other stuff is, well, is this really of value, you know? I, I, I like bright lines, and I, so I would say, just don't, if you can possibly do so. And, you know, the bottom line is, is that the policy also talks about consequences, right? And I will say, you know, again, people make mistakes, they get passionate, they interrupt each other, of course that's going to happen. The mayor, the chair can simply say, hey, reminder, please don't do that. If there's a repeated pattern of this kind of behavior, there are sanctions, if there's an appointed official, the mayor, um, and I'm sure your chair can do this, is that take somebody aside. They can reprimand verbal, you know, written, and ultimately, there can be removal after, you know, comes to, before the, the body, um, for disposition. If it's an elected official, um, then the body can censure that person, okay? But, we don't want to get to that point, back to this notion of perpetuating the fine reputation of the city and of all of you individually. Now, last but not least are these additional concepts that come from the school board's code of ethics that I wanted to highlight. Again, so much of what is in there is very much identical to everything we've already covered, but, um, a couple of things that I like, good nuggets, but if you're in the minority of a vote, you support the majority's vote, you know, graciously, because you are a body, ultimately. Never promise a constituent that you will vote a particular kind of way, that's back to this notion of due process. And you want to never vote until you hear the last comment from the last person, or the last email that you get, because it may very well change your mind. And it should be able to change your mind, and that was, again, some of the comments I heard from the, you know, folks in the public with the outgoing counselor saying, you know, and the counselor back saying, you know what, you changed my mind. And I love that, right? And so, I want you all to think about that and be open to it. And the last thing is that you need to endeavor to attend every meeting. Now, of course, life gets in the way sometimes, but that needs to be the intention, because if you're representing your ward, you're representing students, and parents, and, and citizens, and that needs to be your focus. Um, and if you can't, and again, life happens, you may want to consider resigning that post if you can't fulfill it. So, that's it, that's all I've got, um, and happy to entertain any questions that you have now, or in the future, and I will get back to you on that question around, um, the sixty-fourty schools.
Thank you. Any last-minute questions or comments for city solicitor? Any last-minute questions or comments for city solicitor?
Thank you very much.
No, thank you, Leah. All right, thank you, everyone. All right, that completes the ethics and forward training. Moving on to item D, that is the election of the deputy mayor, and that is Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Article two, section 2.05, election and term subsection C of the charter states, "The city council shall elect from its membership a deputy mayor who shall exercise all powers of the mayor during temporary absence or disability of the mayor. In the event of a vacancy in the office of mayor, the deputy mayor shall assume the office of mayor with all duties and obligations of that office in accordance with the provisions of section 2.06 subsection C 1. The mayor has suggested to hold the election of the deputy mayor by Australian ballot. Council should suspend its rules and orders for this change. Council members will vote for deputy mayor by the Australian secret ballot provided, and those ballots shall be collected and tallied by the mayor. Once the Australian ballot is concluded and the counselor receives four or more votes, I will read the motion."
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules and order of business to hold the Australian ballot?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Onan?
Yes.
Counselor Gale?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and order passes 7-0, excuse me, 6-0. City Administrator will pass out the ballot. Are there any nominations for deputy mayor? Counselor Parks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to put forward my own name.
Thank you, are there any others?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
I would like to nominate Counselor Johnston.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, so we have two nominations, one for Counselor Parks and one for Counselor Johnston. You all have your ballot, would you please write down your choice? Counselor Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Be it ordered that the city council move to elect Counselor Joshua Parks as deputy mayor of the city of Saco for the term of one year commencing December 1, 2025. I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Edwards. Roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Onan?
Yes.
Counselor Gale?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Congratulations, Counselor Parks. Okay, moving on to item E, that is the confirmation of the council liaisons and appointments to the committees, and that is Counselor Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is the practice of the city council that if council members serve as a liaison with city boards, committees, and commissions, by code, some committees and boards include voting rights. The mayor has made updates the individuals appointed to these bodies and is seeking council confirmation. Be it ordered that the city council approve the mayor's appointments as detailed in the document titled "Saco City Counselor Liaison and Appointments to Committees, December 1, 2025." I move to approve the order.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Counselor Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Any discussion or comment on the appointments? I hope everyone is satisfied with their appointments. There are any questions down the road, please let me know going forward. And roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Onan?
Yes.
Counselor Gale?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Okay, item number F is the adoption of the rules and order of business, and that is Counselor Johnston.
Pursuant to Article two, section 2.08b of the city charter, city council shall determine its own rules and order of business the first meeting of each newly-elected city council. City council shall provide for the keeping of a journal of its proceedings. This journal shall be a public record and shall be kept in the office of the city clerk. City council hereby adopts the rules and orders of business attached hereto as exhibit one, and move to approve the order.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Counselor Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hewitt. Any discussion or comments on the rules and order? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I have two amendments. The first one, or I should say, I have two amendments for council, I consider. The first one is Rule 14, which, the amendment I would propose, I'll read the full rule. No standing rule or order of the council shall be suspended unless a four-sevenths majority of the members of council present shall consent to or thereto for a specific purpose, nor shall any rule or order be repealed, amended, without one week's notice being given of the motion therefore, or unless a four-sevenths majority of the council shall concur therein. The amendment I would propose is striking or after repealed, adding a comma, and then adding or acted upon after amended, and then strike four-sevenths and add three-fifths in its place, if everybody's striking. What I'm doing here is, this past summer, we had an instance where we suspended the rules on a topic that, again, going back to instilling good governance, we took an item that was a new business item, suspended the rules, and acted on that item that very night. I think it led to some confusion, certainly the outcome of it, I don't think was well thought out or planned, and I think counselors that are still here probably could attest to that. So, again, the intent here is to, if we were to suspend the rules, not act on an order as we did, without giving a week's notice. And then you have the unless, which currently allows for four-sevenths, and I am proposing that we do a three-fifth supermajority. That way you have, it's more clear that it's a majority of the council that would wish to act on something. If anyone has any questions.
Any questions or comments regarding that change? Administrator, you have that?
I can send it.
Documented.
I think I have most of it, but it'd be great if it could be sent to me.
Could you email that over?
Yeah, I could. Are we comfortable acting on it as I presented, or is this something we should further table?
We'll see if there are any other additional amendments or changes. Yeah, Counselor Gale?
Could I just ask a clarifying question? So if the intent is a supermajority, could we keep it at five-sevenths? I just feel like, I guess I'm a little confused on the three-fifths versus the four-sevenths and the kind of the ease for everyone to understand, but...
Nope, that's a fair question. The three-fifths is the same supermajority that we use to go into executive session. So I understand that the fraction might not make sense, but it would require, so if you had a seven-body member, it would require five affirmative votes, and then as you go down in counselors, it would still be that supermajority. So, again, overall, we don't, when we generally suspend the rules in the past, it's making an exception to one of our, you know, rules that function. In this particular case, we had an instance where we were just, again, under new business, discussing an item, came up, counselor decided, let's act on this tonight, and I, speaking from my own personal opinion at the time, I thought it wasn't good governance. Again, we didn't allow the public to discuss what was occurring, I don't think all the counselors fully understood what we were doing, it was kind of an arbitrary decision in my book. So I was hoping to avoid that going forward, so that, again, if something comes up and this is specific to giving an order, we should follow the regular process that we tend to do with that, you know, so put it on agenda and notice. Otherwise, again, tracking the history of a vote like that is kind of difficult and, you know, not in the best interest of the public, in my opinion.
Counselor Hewitt, did you ever hand it?
Yeah, I have a clarification question regarding the must give one week's notice. Like, in the example tonight, the Australian ballot, we suspended our usual rules, would we have to publish that in advance for a week? Are you just saying to give a week till we act on anything the public has opportunity?
I think that if you look at the language, it says, "nor shall any rule or order be amended or repealed." So this generally is saying that in, say, for tonight, for example, we wouldn't change a vote, a previously-approved rule without noticing a week in advance. I'm adding, or given order, which doesn't, it exists, but it's not in the same context being acted on, just as given order. I'm trying to clarify that we won't act on, we won't suspend the rules and then just act on something, is really the intent.
No different than a common one that we tend to do is if there is a situation where we have an executive session and the attorney needs to be earlier, we will ask to suspend the rules and order because our order states when executive session is at the end of the agenda, but if we wanted to move it up, that's not changing or repealing or anything, that's just asking for a temporary one-night change to move an item which is listed on the agenda as last. But if we had a person that needed to be in attendance and they couldn't get here, or they had to be done earlier, so that's a very simple solution on that one. But to Counselor Johnston's point, if we're bringing something new to the floor, there is the potential that that may require some more notice. Is that a little? And to that point, actually, I did want to make note that we do not actually have the deputy mayor election in our rules and order, and that should be added as well. We will not need to suspend the rules and order because it now will be identified in the rules and order that it is by Australian ballot. Any other, oh, Counselor Johnston?
Rule 42, it's the last rule, it currently is cut off in the packet. We previously approved this back in January of this year, and it continued on for another paragraph, I just want to be certain that that substance is included because that's really the majority of that rule. I think it was just a clerical mistake.
Yes, it does continue on the actual link on the city page. And Counselor Gale, to your point, page 10 of the rules and order does give a brief description of the majority voting. So it will give you whether it's four-sevenths, three-fifths, how the layout is. Counselor Onan, did you raise your hand? Oh, okay. All right, any other changes or comments? Are counselors okay with these changes, or would you like it brought back with the changes for next meeting? Okay, roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Onan?
Yes.
Counselor Gale?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion with changes as provided, passes 6-0. Okay, that completes the items for this evening. Item number eight is the administrative update. Administrator Prescott?
Thank you. Snow parking ban reminders, the snow parking bans allow our Public Works crews to clear roads safely and efficiently, helping first responders and essential travel throughout the city during and after storms. Please visit sacomaine.org/parkingban to sign up for parking ban alerts and for information regarding public parking available in several city-owned lots. Free sand and salt mix is available for residents. Residents can pick up a bucket of free sand and salt mix at Saco Public Works, 15 Phillips Spring Road, near the compost drop-off site. Please bring your own bucket and remember that this service is for residential users only and not contractors. We're excited to welcome our new assistant city planner, Madison Vlass, to the city's planning team. She has experience in historic preservation, architectural research, and general planning department initiatives. Saco launches a new app for easy trash and recycling pickup info. We're pleased to announce the launch of the new app for this by our provider, Casella, which will allow users to see collection dates, receive notifications about delays or rescheduling trash collection, or to report any issues. You want to go to sacomaine.org/trashandrecycling for more information. We're also excited for our upcoming tree lighting ceremony. We invite community members to join us on Friday, December 5, at 5:30 p.m. for the holiday tree lighting hosted by Saco Main Street. Come gather around the tree for hot cocoa carols led by the Saco Middle School Chorus and a countdown to the moment the tree lights up the season. Also coming up is our Holiday Festival and Parade of Lights, December 13. The light is a Saco tradition, blending daytime fun with the parade in the evening. During the daytime festival, families can enjoy storytime with Santa, live carolers on Main Street, winter craft activities, the festival trees, and other holiday activities before the Parade of Lights begins. You want to go to sacomainstreet.org and sacomaine.org for additional information including parade route and temporary road closures and detours during the event.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the city administrator? Okay, with the tree lighting, I would personally like to thank the Dyer Library for their donation of the tree this year. Many of you, if you've been by the library, knew the big spruce on the side by the parking lot. Unfortunately, that tree had grown too large for the spot and was causing some issues, and they generously donated the tree to the city for the tree lighting. Okay, up next, council discussion and comment. Any counselors wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone moving on to item 10, that is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Edwards, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hewitt, roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Onan?
Yes.
Counselor Gale?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn at 7:49, passes 6-0. Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening. And please be safe on the roads tomorrow. And please be safe on the roads tomorrow.